Okay, good, alright.
Beating to more of a vocal to.
Americanos?
Here.
He's the greedy is here but stepped out, Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Ruseth Addison, Mr. Traynor.
Here.
Mrs. Mara.
Here.
Mr. Zedderino.
Here.
Notice in this meeting provided to the Burnsville News and Courier News filed with the municipal clerk and posted on the Michigan Bulletin Board of December fifth, twenty twenty four. Welcome to the October twenty seventh, the fifth meeting of the Burnsville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers in Bowe Hall. And it is being broadcast live on YouTube and on Zoom to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings on ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and informed by the borough clerk. Comments containing offensive profane or indecent language or language constituting hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of the three minutes of allotted time, or if they make any inappropriate or offensive comment. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state their name and address before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body in audience. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and for participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. Got that? Alright. Um, I am happy to, uh, have here our school board officials. And you are gonna do a little presentation on upcoming referendum. Thank you for coming tonight. And you brought the clerk with you.
I did. So thanks for having us. Uh, my name is Brian Brochel. I'm the superintendent of the school district. For those that I haven't met personally, I've met, uh, a few of you in my travels in town and, um, you know, perhaps uh, this shouldn't be the first time that I introduce myself to the, uh, to the council, so I apologize for that. But I hit the ground running district and I've enjoyed, um, frankly every second. Um, I do have, um, some information for the folks here, um. Thank you, sir. And I didn't realize there were cookies, uh, but.
Every meeting.
Every meeting. So, you, you know what I say, it's always a great day in Somerset Hills, so. So this is, uh, just another reason. So, um, first and foremost, you all are community volunteers and I appreciate the time, uh, that you got allocated to me tonight. It's not my intention to monopolize it, uh, but as a courtesy to you, I've, um, met with Americanos and she, um, has been kind enough to extend a brief opportunity just to apprise the council as to what the school district intends to do in March and it kind of gives some, uh, some context, uh, as to why. Uh, we have, um, kind of a vast and far-reaching, uh, public relations campaign, uh, going on since we do service kids from multiple municipalities and multiple towns, uh, so, and you know, I've been reaching out to the town, various, uh, municipal councils and speaking with them and, you know, it, it really is a, uh, I'm very thankful that, uh, you've extended that to me as well. Uh, so I will, uh, kind of give you the Cliff's Notes version of what we, uh, intend to do. We have a, uh, referendum vote that we are, uh, intending to announce for March tenth of twenty twenty six. And, uh, the long and short of it is that we are looking to enhance some of our learning environments, um, in, uh, all three of our schools, um, first and foremost. Uh, we are, uh, looking to enhance student and staff safety, um, with, uh, to ensure that their physical physical security enhancements that are necessary for long-term. Um, and we are looking to, uh, maintain, um, our operational program. So all of our operational systems, you know, we're looking to, um, do some enhancements there. Uh, the school district is at a unique, uh, juncture at this point where we do have some expiring debt. Uh, that are, is a coming off of the books, which, uh, gives us an opportunity, um, to replace the expiring debt with new debt, which results in a net neutral, um, transaction. Uh, that will allow, in the event that the voters are supportive of it, that would allow, um, myself and my business administrator, Mr. LaGore, uh, to act on behalf of the board, um, to conduct the bond sale, um, in order to finance, uh, some enhancements to our physical plan. Uh, so that's kind of like some context as to why, uh, the board is elected to move, um, in this direction. Uh, we are anticipating just a touch under thirty-four percent of CD. Um, and that's a kind of a unique opportunity here, um, when we go out for a bond referendum. School districts do have the opportunity to capitalize on CD. Um, and, uh, the projects that we are proposing, um, just under thirty-four percent, um, of them qualify uh, for state aid, which is, um, significant and certainly a drive. Uh, as an example, when we, uh, pay for and fund enhancements to our facilities through our capital, through our annual budget, uh, those projects do not qualify for CD. So in the event of, as an example, a replacement of a, uh, track, uh, which we recently did at the high school, that was done, uh, without any CD. So, and but funded through, um, our budget. So, uh, CD is available and certainly, uh, we are looking, um, to take advantage, you know, of that, uh, to share the cost, um, you know, with the, uh, Department of Education and with the state of New Jersey. We, uh, conducted a, a facilities evaluation, so we really had a deep and broad examination of exactly what our challenges were operationally, and we were able to go through a process with our architects of record and identify of, of, you know, an area of, of greatest need and greatest priority. Um, we spent, uh, a lion's share last winter, uh, preparing, um, to move forward with a long-range facility plan approval with the New Jersey Department of Education, and we are at the very end, you know, of that. So, um, we certainly did not, uh, conduct this work in vacuum and we wanted to take a pragmatic approach to examining, uh, what our needs are. At the same time, uh, the board has taken an opportunity over the past several years to address, um, some major, uh, projects in and around the district that, um, were, were in need of upkeep. So, uh, we were able to renovate the media center at the high school. Uh, we had a multi-year program in our performing arts center to upgrade the lighting and sound. Uh, there was a new installation of synthetic turf, uh, on the high school field. Uh, the running track was, um, uh, was, uh, replaced as well. Uh, there was an installation of athletic lighting there. Uh, we had renovated the lower fields. Um, and, uh, we're in the process of, um, over a multi-year budget, uh, completely, uh, redoing and renovating the tennis courts that are all on CD drive. So, um, and those take, those have taken place outside, um, of this work. Uh, we are looking to enhance, um, our science labs at the high school, at the middle school, and even, uh, build brand-new, um, technology and engineering labs at Bedwell, uh, through this. Um, we are looking to do some media center renovations at Bedwell as well, uh, some kindergarten renovations. Um, we're looking to add the creation of a culinary arts, uh, program. Uh, the board has a goal in order to enhance what we call career and technical education opportunities for students. Uh, so the culinary arts program, uh, that we're looking to institute kind of speaks, uh, to that. Um, and in addition, we're looking to renovate, um, some visual arts classrooms, uh, as well. Uh, from a district-wide perspective, um, we are looking to upgrade and expand our camera systems. Uh, we are looking to, um, further implement school notification and lockdown systems. Um, we do have, uh, a design to, uh, enhance and to build a security vestibule, uh, at Bedwell, providing ballistic film, uh, for all lower-level, uh, first-floor, um, uh, rooms, uh, around those facilities. And, um, we also have sections of roofing that we're examining, uh, fire alarm systems, uh, we're looking to enhance our bleachers, um, in the lower gym at the high school. And, um, there's a, some pretty significant upgrades that we'll be to include into this gathering. Uh, the next few slides on the deck that you all have, um, are examples of, uh, current existing labs at, um, the high school and with some mockups regarding, um, some flexible, um, some flexible seating and, uh, some, some opportunities for different types of layouts, um, in the science labs of twenty twenty five. There are some mockups here regarding our existing art and two-dimensional art classrooms, and we're looking to, um, completely, uh, reimagine them in order to uh, ensure that we're meeting the needs of the students of today so we can prepare them for, uh, apologies and careers for tomorrow. Uh, we have some significant science lab work at the middle school. And in addition, uh, we are also, uh, looking to implement a, a brand-new, um, science, technology, engineering, and math facility at Bedwell. Um, again, our role here, uh, as a school district, as a board of education, as an administration, is to prepare students for careers that do not even exist yet. And our lowest, um, our youngest learners, um, in the district, um, need to have challenging spaces um, that expose them, um, to these areas of breaking. So you'll see that, uh, as well. Uh, you'll see some work, uh, regarding a security vestibule at Bedwell, which is, uh, very much needed and very much a priority here. And, um, that was, uh, essentially a non-negotiable and, um, you know, something that we feel very strongly about. Um, the high school program will see, uh, renovations, uh, that include a culinary arts lab. Uh, they'll see renovations to all of the, uh, chemistry, physics, biology, uh, and robotics and technology spaces. You'll see, uh, television and, um, podcasting enhancements, um, inside of our current labs. We're going to bring them up to twenty twenty-five and beyond. Um, so we are seeing a big uptick in students that are creating their own content, uh, through the TV broadcast and radio and, uh, podcasting now. And so we're looking to renovate those spaces. Uh, the high school will have, um, security enhancements, uh, roofing and, um, and the light. The middle school will, um, see their science labs renovated. They will see our roofing systems replaced, um, in some, some needed sections and, uh, further security, uh, enhancements as well. And Bedwell, as we spoke about, uh, will see, um, a host of projects that include a security office, a security vestibule. Uh, they will have a dedicated corridor for our kindergarten program. Um, we will see, uh, additional security enhancements, um, at Bedwell, uh, as well. Um, so the cost for this, uh, proposal is thirty-eight million, twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. Um, we are expecting, um, at this point, in, uh, just over twelve million dollars in state aid. Um, and that will come to the district over, in, in the event that it's approved by the taxpayers, that will come to the district over a twenty-year, uh, term. Uh, that gets forwarded and transmitted to the district in debt service aid on an annual basis when we receive our, uh, what we call our state aid, um, from the Department of Education. It will include debt servicing. So that twelve million dollars will be spread out over twenty years. Um, so after the debt service aid is applied over time, the cost of our project, so proposal, it's twenty-five million, four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy times. Um, if you are a resident in Burnsville, we have, uh, been working very closely with, uh, the folks here uh, in this building and we have the average assessed value of a home here at nine-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. And, uh, there will be no current tax impact, um, regarding this, uh, this particular proposal. Uh, we, you have a section on our website that does, uh, host, um, an expanded version of these speaking points. Uh, we also are hosting community events in November, December, and January in our, uh, over at the high school. We're focused on more, uh, and, uh, we have a dedicated email address, uh, which is included in your slide deck and, um, uh, some social media feeds, because no, uh, no public post for anything isn't complete without a little social media, so. I want to thank the council for your time and for the opportunity. And, uh, yeah, I wanted to just take this opportunity as a courtesy to let you know who we're working on on the other side of town. And, uh, certainly, um, I personally consider you all partners and, uh, I'm thankful for the time to be able to stand you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The council has questions for us?
I have a question.
Oh, certainly, that, uh, state debt servicing. So the state debt servicing is, is a certainty. Um, probably the biggest, the biggest variable at this point is, um, in the event that the, uh, that the the issue is passed, right? It's really where the market stands on our interest in bonds. That's probably the biggest variable at this point. And that would be subject to a competitive process, um, for a bond sale. Right now, we projected a four percent. We feel strong about that. Um, so the, the debt service aid is something that, that, um, they've committed to through, uh, the approval of our long-range facility plan, which is what you need to have happen throughout the vote.
Okay. And taking it from the center of the night, too, that's very helpful.
Thanks for having me.
Reminds me. Uh, Steve, thanks for being here tonight. Real appreciate it. Your presentation. Um, I got four questions. They're all pretty quick, just a couple of questions. Um, just from like the mechanics of the actual referendum, is it just a straight vote between three boroughs? Or is that the cast individual borough? Just how does that?
It's so it's a, it's a straight vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, when was the last bond referendum? When was the last vote?
So I believe in two thousand and sixteen, but I can, uh, research that.
So about nine years ago, then, okay. Uh, did fails? Is it, these capital improvements just don't happen or an agency plan?
Yeah, so if, if it doesn't pass, you, the board has some options. Uh, option one is to do nothing and keep things the same. Uh, option two is to take off some of these projects through our annual budgeting process. Uh, but the rub there is, um, you don't get the state aid. So you're paying, you know, you're, you're paying that full ticket o- on those projects. Um, third option is, is for the board to go out to the community, uh, again, for, you know, another vote. Sometimes boards elect to revise the projects. Sometimes they like to take a different approach on how to communicate it. Uh, so that would, those are kind of like the three links.
Yeah. And then, um, you actually started to maybe answer my fourth question, which was, um, I know this doesn't have a tax impact on residents, but I do think you took a tax increase this year.
Um, yeah.
So just explain for residents, uh, like I assume that that's operations versus capital improvements, but just for your community, justify it by that.
Correct. So, um, so this is separate from our annual budget development. The district is capped at how much the budget can increase year over year. Uh, there is a two percent, um, tax cap levy on how much it grow. Uh, so the, the history of how to keep the district operational and how to keep it functioning is that, um, we historically have gone to our two percent, to our full two percent budget growth. Uh, there are, um, some other flexibilities in, in budget growth as well that are connected to, um, health insurance and health benefits.
Almost like we do. Yeah, we've got a similar.
But to be clear, and I'm glad that you brought it up, taxes may increase, uh, once we go through our budgeting cycle in March and April. Um, and the latitude of the permissibility is that they are able to increase up to two percent.
Correct. Thank you.
Yep.
I, I love seeing culinary arts, um, and the emphasis more on some of the trades and technical skills that I think have been missing. So I'm excited to see the best part of this project.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ooh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Yeah.
Are you gonna pay a poll?
No.
No poll?
Not till we get to the public session. Or you can, or you, you can go out and hold and ask still questions.
You want to, Joe? I wanted the council to hear this. About the pardon?
No, Joe, go. You're not one of the council.
I'll, I'll bring you up then.
That's fine. You can come back.
Yeah.
Thank you. These guys.
Thank you.
As I was saying, this is not a town hall meeting. It's a council meeting in some. We sent your job.
Yes.
So there's more opportunities. And we have more on our program. So we don't want to hold you up anymore. So we're coming up on our Brooklyn, Brooklyn water engineering. So you are up. Thank you for coming. And it's been a while since you've been here.
I know. It's been, I spent about three and a half years.
Yeah, and we do have some council people, so we thought it was a good opportunity to kind of get everybody to speed on during the hour. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, I.
No, you don't have to stand. I hate to do this. On the, uh, the little X there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so I prepared a brief presentation, which is a little bit of an update from the twenty-twenty-two presentation. And I walked through kind of where we are with the project and then a comparison on the costs. So they know that was a big, we never mentioned that man's, we didn't gotten. Um, so you can, like, advance. So this is just a quick summary up here of the benefits of the dam removal. Obviously, um, one of the main ones is eliminating the liability risks associated with dam ownership, which I will circle back to later in this presentation. Also restoring the fish habitat of Mangbrook, improving the water quality, um, reducing the temperature, reducing the people full of form loading from geese that are prevalent out there. Uh, and then also getting that free-flowing movement of the water, which eliminates debris clogs and sedimentation loading in the ponds, um, ultimately. Uh, this is gonna be hard to see at this scale, but I have it here so that if we need to refer back to it when I go over the cost, I will. But just at a high level, um, this shows you the current impoundment with the proposed improvements. Um, it's going to be a narrower stream channel, obviously, when the impoundment, um, and the dam is removed. Um, we have several structures that are required to address the change in elevation from the upstream end of the pond to the downstream. Uh, we also have, um, some bank stabilization, um, which is required to hold the stream channel in place so that it doesn't try to grade all through the former pond and kind of create a mosquito swampy mess. So there's stabilization techniques that are associated with that. Um, there's also plantings, um, that are required, uh, not only just to replace the, you know, expand the lawn area, but to add in some pollinator and native plantings, again, along the banks that are required for the permitting. This also includes, um, park improvements, which I think is, um, a portion of the cost concerns, um, that are different between the original estimate and the new estimate, which includes, um, the walking paths, um, the replacement pedestrian bridges, some additional stabilization for those pedestrian bridges, benches, signage, and some other park improvements as well. So here's where we are in terms of permitting. Uh, we need four permit approvals for the project. The dam safety construction permit was our biggest, um, approval that was necessary. We filed permits back in June of twenty twenty-three. And in June of twenty twenty-five, we received the approvals year to year through the stage process to receive the permit. Um, they issued that approval in June. The wetlands permit is still pending. It has been pending for two and a half years. Um, I spoke to them today. I've been asking them almost every day for an update on your permit. Um, they tell me that they're very close to being done. Um, so I am conservatively estimating December, but I'm hopeful that we actually have that next month. Um, they said they're waiting for just some comments from a threatened endangered species review, and that's the last piece for them to issue that. Uh, then I'll be finished with the state permits, uh, with the exception of the soil erosion and sediment control certification from Somerset Union Soil Conservation District, which I don't want to file until I know that Budlands is really done with their review in case they ask me to change more on the design.
Can I just ask a question there? So, yeah, is, do you anticipate any of the permits being denied? Or is it more, if they ask for?
Administrative paperwork situation. And unfortunately, with the wetlands approval, they are not obligated to give us a permit in any particular time period. And what has gone on? I've been working in permitting and doing this for thirty years or so. And in the last, probably, four years, we've seen a lot of the state agency, um, folks retire and then they aren't necessarily replacing them. So all that does is increase the workload on the remaining staff. And, um, two years for even a dam safety permit is not something that I'm even telling is a reasonable time for me to receive permits. I have some projects that have taken three, four, and five years to receive their approvals.
Yeah.
So, um, costs, I have broken these into some general categories and I want to kind of touch on what the differences between the two. I have the twenty-twenty-two estimate in the center column, the twenty-twenty-five estimate in the right column, and then the left is the broken down categories. In twenty-twenty-two, we had just completed the feasibility phase of the project and hadn't done any of the detailed engineering yet. Um, and Ferrero was the borough engineer and they had done some portions of the engineering. And so some of my twenty-twenty-two estimate did not include all of the improvements that they ultimately completed engineering design for. And so a big portion of the difference between the two estimates comes down to improvements that I wasn't necessarily doing the engineering for um, and were added into the project as they completed their engineering designs. Um, that includes the walking trail benches and signage piece. Um, it also includes portions of the stabilization for the footbridges and abutment protections that they designed around those footbridges. Um, and then additionally increased planting and changes to the plantings. Um, the other change in cost estimate, um, comes down to the amount of material muted to be disposed of from the former impoundment. And that is a result of some of the dam safety comments back and forth with regards to the additional rock quantities that they wanted placed in to stabilize. So in order for me to put rock in, I have to take more material out of the former impoundment to offset that, which is another part of that cost increase. Um, and then four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, um, was a recent, more recent add-on for the parking lot um, stream bank stabilization where it's eroding down along the brook downstream of the dam.
Are contingencies over ones or unplanned?
Contingencies is unplanned uncertainties, and that's about twenty percent. In the initial estimate, we had that down more at ten percent. But unfortunately, with construction materials. But unfortunately, with construction materials right now and the uncertainty with regards to tariffs and. Um imports and exports of materials, there's huge fluctuations in cost. So I no longer do estimates with a ten percent contingency. Um I tend to err on a twenty percent side. Just because I don't really know what's gonna happen until it goes out to bid in terms of material cost and things of that nature.
So would this be one bid for that whole thing, or is it gonna be, so they would do the whole?
They would do everything, yes.
And about how long would you think it would take to do this whole process?
This construction to start um to start the construction and complete everything is going to take weather depending about four months.
That's all? I thought it would take them longer, yeah.
No, if we have good weather and we can kind of keep moving along for months instead of we end up with like a very, very wet. Period where it's just raining every single day. Um you can look at maybe double that or more depending.
Are there contractors who can do this whole project?
Absolutely, yes. And I have a list of contractors that I would definitely make sure, it's obviously a public bid, um but there's people that I would. Make sure they knew about the bid um to be able to submit for, because there are contractors who specialize in this. Um and then last, we just wanted to touch on funding, because when I came to you all last time, um there was a lot of funding. Available for uh dam removal projects, and I was confident we could get most of the cost covered by grants. Um so in twenty twenty four, um we filed the first grant applications for this. Um the NIQUEF five star grant, we did not receive, um that was given more to um lower income municipality projects. Um and we just didn't score high enough on that grant. The USDA NRCS EQUIP funding, um they were very confident we would be funded. However, the administration changed and the federal funding shifts um went into chaos early this year. Um and so that funding was pulled. Um we were scheduled for a meeting in March. Uh we were confident we were going to receive at least half a million towards it and possibly more. Um they put that on pause at the state agency level. We weren't sure whether they were going to reopen that. Um they did reopen that for projects like this one. Um earlier this month. So that application for five hundred thousand did go in. Um and we will find out in early twenty twenty six whether that is good. Uh we also received a twenty five thousand dollar grant from the major conservancy. Um so we have that in hand. We have additional funding options through the New Jersey Corporate Wetlands Restoration Partnership. Um they take rolling applications that max out at about twenty five thousand again. Um but that's one we could apply for pretty much at any time, and I think we'd be guaranteed to receive. Um the New Jersey Highlands Council has funding for engineering um and planning work. So perhaps some of the remaining work would associate with the permitting, and then the construction bid administration could be covered there. Um US Fish and Wildlife Service Partners Program has additional funding that can be put towards plant materials in particular. Um so I believe we can get funded with that. And then FEMA High Hazard Dam Grant, the state of New Jersey received that. Um we were not fully compliant, the borough was not fully compliant on um the FEMA requirements. We now are. Um however, that money was also put on hold with the federal shift. Damn safety is hopeful. It will return in twenty twenty six, but there's no guarantee. Um if that does come back around, the grant's worth up to a million dollars, so that would be a significant amount of money as well. So we are tracking the funding, hoping um for a return to to some of the options for dam removal.
So projecting with um the permits waiting on those, when do you think this actually might happen?
I'm hopeful that we'd be ready for construction next fall. However, with the um NRCS EQUIP monies, it's unlikely that they would get through their. Process to issue the half million by next fall, so it would be more likely spring of twenty twenty seven when you actually need to start the birth.
Anyone else? Yeah, I've just said two that were rejected. How much were they?
Um the NIQUEF five star grant was for seventy five thousand that we applied for. That was the max that they would allow. Um and then the EQUIP twenty twenty four, um they were looking at around seven hundred fifty under the old. Who was there, but that show has come down to the five hundred, which is why they put it in for the five hundred for us.
And I'm sorry, so those are different five hundred though?
That's that's the EQUIP. Yeah, so NRCS EQUIP grant, we um were going to get that in twenty twenty four. And they were looking at a price point of around seven fifty, um but then we were, you know, told that that was renamed all the. They they pulled all of the EQUIP funding for all stream and dam removal projects in the state. Um and then, like I said, they reopened it for us uh in October.
Yeah, so they're two different years, so.
One is twenty twenty four versus twenty twenty five.
Yes, uh hi. Um could you, just for my benefit, so you're on campus, would you like rewind and explain what was the impetus for all of this? How did we first find out that there was an issue in the dam? And maybe just give us a little more of a bit of that.
Sure, that was actually, that predates me, but I do the history. Um so uh dam safety alerted um you all that. The dam was in need of a hydrologic and hydraulic analysis to evaluate whether the dam could pass. Particular design flood as per their regulation. So in other words, a lot of raining, a lot of water coming through, they have a standard based on. The hazard classification, meaning the risk to loss of life and property resulting from the dam, that your dam must safely pass that design storm. Um and so they had um your municipal engineer at the time, complete an analysis of whether the dam could safely pass that required design storm. And it couldn't. So that required a discussion of either upgrading the existing dam. To safely pass that design storm or removing it. That's the two options that the state gives you as a dam owner.
Did uh I think one of the things too, we're looking at seriously, and I'm assuming I know the answer, but. To, since the cost has gone up a lot, we were thinking, well, let's go back and make sure that it's not gonna be more expensive to take the to dam down. As opposed to uh either build a new one, I guess, or repair this one?
Yeah, so I actually have one more slide of the presentation for that. I anticipated that potential question. Uh so uh when they were looking at the overtopping protection analysis, um they did that simultaneous to the feasibility study work in twenty twenty two. And has to do that at about three point seven million for the installation of the increased spillway and the overtopping protection. Um in bringing that to twenty twenty six, costs will be about three point four million. Um based on the construction cost changes. Um and then that would also require a brand new set of engineering drawings and a restart of your permit process. Um I don't do damn re-tackle. So I can't say with certainty what that would cost you, but off the cuff, it's probably about five hundred thousand dollars in engineering consulting fees. Because it needs more structural engineering work to deal with all of the layouts. Um than uh than what a dam removal uh project requires. Um and then there's also the long-term maintenance cost. So every two years, this dam requires an inspection, which is three thousand dollars for engineers to complete. Um to complete emergency management plan updates. Um every five years for about five thousand dollars, structural and formal inspections are required every ten years. For about twenty thousand dollars in current day cost. Um and then anything that engineers. In those inspections requires. Staff or contractors to come in and complete the the required. So that's sort of the monthly expenses.
Two questions on that.
Sure.
Um thank you, by the way. Do you, what are the uh, is there a comply by date that the dam safety commission has underscored?
Yeah, so in the permit we received in June, they requested that instructions start within one calendar year. Um normally, they don't have that condition. That's the first time I have seen that on a removal. But you are a um high class of dam due to the risk with the um emergency responder building being attached to the structure. Um so that puts you into a special category where they want you to do the removal as soon as possible. Um so they want you to start by next June. Um however, knowing that there's funding that could come in a little bit behind that. And frankly, the state's only delays in issuing the wetlands permit, I believe we will have Nancy in that. Um I spoke to them about it, and they seem comfortable that as long as you have a planned construction timeline or some delay on that.
If you reverse course someone to maintain the dam, how about complying with the upgrades that are required?
Um they would expect you to start the engineering process immediately and get the permits in as quickly as humanly possible.
And then what is the um kind of? What enforcement do they have? Like in other words, what's the cost of doing nothing and delaying further?
Um the cost of doing nothing, they would turn you, they would send you a bunch of um deficiency letters. I'm gonna say probably for about six months or more, um and then they would turn your case over to the deputy attorney general's office. For um assessing like daily or monthly fines is the way they usually meet compliance issues.
But um do you remember, do you know when the dam was first built?
When it was first constructed, I'm not sure, but it had a major upgrade in the seventies.
Seventies.
Um it's a mill dam, so my gas is buried underneath of everything from seventies upgrade, there may be even timber crib. So if I had to guess, we're looking at something seventeen hundreds, eighteen hundreds era originally.
And when did the regulations go into effect that suddenly determined that this was an unsafe dam after being there for hundreds of years?
Yeah, they're sandy, I think.
Yeah, so there the dam safety rules went into effect, actually, um New Jersey's rules have been in place since the nineteen teens. Um but the changes in the precipitation uh floods for the flood study request. Um that particular analysis wasn't required until the late nineties. Um and it took the state a while due to the number of high hazard dams they have. Um to get around to checking in for a lot of those.
And actually, if you've seen the drawings, uh we we still have those that of that for our idea of what that dam would look like. It was complying, it wouldn't be like miles above the cement.
It's it's not free. They did, they even did like a video, if I recall, I don't have.
I'm not sure. This is pretty, that would not be good. I think that RAR did, nobody, there was no second opinion on it.
On the cost to rehab the dam?
No, just the fact that our dam would not withhold from the flood study request.
Um no, I mean, the state, I reviewed their hydraulics as part of what I needed to do for the removal. Um it was done in standard practice, like consistent with what's required, but in terms of. Someone actually looking to see if all the details could be modified, um no, I don't think anyone did a second opinion study at that level. Again, that predates me a bit, so I'm more speculating.
Thank you so much for uh coming back and doing this and first hanging in there so long with the D J.
Yes, we're just continuing.
You've got a lot of frustration with state agencies.
Uh believe me, I have had a lot of frustrations myself. I just try to try to get them to get me whatever I can. Push the issue, but I talked to them even earlier today on this, but in particular, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have approval of the minutes from September fifteenth and the twenty ninth. This is a motion. Go on favor?
Hi.
Okay, we now have our first open session for the public. Again, I remind you that this is not a town hall meeting. It's a Q and A. It's a little too baby's thing. Bring him in first.
No, I just wanted to thank Nancy and her staff for, um it's later on in your resume, she's, I think it's one ninety six. For their work on the hit that would make the rise in our benefits cost considerably less devastating. That is, I know it was a lot of work through that everything, and um there's a lot of paperwork that goes along with it and a lot of decisions made. And uh we're thankful that the library can. Roger Cook channels.
It's great. Yeah, I want to thank Fran as well. They had a great, uh I got my flu shot today, the health department. They hosted the health department, um they're giving vaccinations today, plus they had a kind of a mini health fair with different agencies. Um I met the new health department director, who's delightful, so thank you for that and.
Yeah, they've been great partners. They've had a lot of programming. They have one coming up on diabetes at the library. Um we've been offering regular blood pressure screenings, and we're working together to coordinate them more when some of the populations be trying to target. Or um more likely to be in the library at the timing of that, so um no, the burn relationship has been big and great for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm here. One, I came down because the superintendent was coming to talk about the situation at schools and whatever. But we have, we have, the town and schools have a problem with the parking. The two schools up at Bedell. All the parking lots are filled, and they're on our parking lots, our filled also. So we have a problem with that, and I talked to the superintendent about it. I told him I'd work with them. To get parking on their property for all of their teachers and people and whatever. There's no room for guests. We have to park on the street, or we have to park in the pool. And uh so I'm gonna try and meet with him and try and come up with some costs and then to help them try and figure out what can be done. Because they have the back of the school, and then there's other areas where they can build these parking lots. But we have the same problem at the high school. The high school is a real problem. With all cars parking on the road, there's no reason for those cars to be parking on the road. That's a residential area. And there should be no one parking on the road except people coming to visit, maybe because they don't have any parking on the interior law. It's also. So they can do something down in the back that I've talked about. They're gonna be, they're using my engineering firm that did full of fields for me and everything. So we're gonna talk about the lower, lower field. There's a big space between the king's um fence. And where we build in to build the lower fields. And if we can get these uh big concrete blocks with cheap and they they're decorative to put those in there and build the wall and get that filled in. That could be another parking area, and they can move the buses somewhere. I'll look for a private spot for them if they didn't want to park them down there. But the school is totally inundated with parking, and there's no place to park. So that's, that's a situation that needs to be worked out, and I'll work with any of them to help them. To take care of that's, that's our problem. They also need to finish the work that they started on the lower field. The lower field is not a great field.
No, this is the council. That's really bored of this stuff. You have something for us?
But they are taking, uh you know, you you feel you have no uh, you have no pressure from the school. They tend to all the kids up there, and then all these teams are up on our fields that we built, okay? So that's what I'm saying. They're using our fields. Are we getting the money for, because I don't know if you're even fertilizing now. The oven cow or the lower field, the well is now, you know, so I want to know, are we? I I I have no problem with that, but it's better for them if we had, if they had their fields that they could walk right out on the kids. Rather than taking them up to our fields, and then all these towns are coming in and renting. So that money's going into the, that money's going into the general fund rather than going to the field fund, right? All those, all at rental, and we don't know who's up there. And the same thing with our tennis courts, the same thing with the the uh. The paddle tennis uh ball. So no one's looking at it. There's nobody watching. People are from out of town using it, and our people aren't able to get on those courts.
It's those that are green acres are open to anyone from any town. We cannot limit who uses like the pickleball courts or the polar brands, because that's green acres. We cannot limit, say, you know.
Polar grounds is is what?
Green acres, is it not?
How's it green acres? We, my grandfather built the first field, my uncle's built the second field, and we built the set last.
Once the land, you want to explain it, Jack?
Yeah, once you get green acres, my green acres description supply for funding.
Yeah, once you get green acres, my green acres description supply for funding, uh, on part. Everything is open space and recreation space imagery.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is that, okay, I'll, I'll sit down and come back up, you know, another name.
There anybody on Zoom? Right, um, moving to the open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven. Requiring the payment of delinquent taxes as a condition for the issuance of a municipal license or permit. And supplementing and amending chapter two to the Borough of Public Title Administration. Does anyone want to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and I will start with.
I move to pass ordinance number twenty twenty five dash twenty seven on final reading and adopt as published. Mr. Creed?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Lazarino?
Yes.
Open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty five, twenty twenty eight, amended ordinance twenty twenty four, two thousand. Entitled in ordinance vacating a portion of Berners Avenue, which is outside the paved roadway and sidewalk area. And which is necessary for the construction of the affordable housing development. At sixty-three Berners Avenue by correcting the description of the area vacated. Would anyone like to be heard on this?
Uh, you switched that from the Lowington Housing, you took the parking in the, from the front to the back of the building, right?
That is the plan, I think, none of us, but that's in the zoning law, we now don't want to see parking, we want it to be not visible.
Okay, yeah, but you have an eighteen foot road that is not legal. So people can't even turn onto the road and I've been here before about the trucks, garbage trucks and delivery trucks hitting the uh. Hitting, hitting the corner of the cars. You can't do that and then you allow the cars now to stay parked on the road. An eighteen foot roadway and even Berners Avenue, we had that, that there's, there's no parking on that road. People will not go into their own spaces to park. Jennifer, when you see me. But you know what I'm saying, please, please do something with the, you know, that situation up there, it's dangerous. You've created a problem, having the parking lot in the front. They can pull right onto Berners Avenue, which is a twenty-four foot roadway. But you can't pull on to an eighteen, eighteen foot and you're not, you're not taken care of, you know, you're not giving tickets to those people.
Anyone else want to be heard on this ordinance? If not, then we'll close the public hearing, it's now Ross.
I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty three, we'll find a meeting and adopt as calls.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Lazarino?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Creed?
Yes.
I'll open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty five, twenty twenty nine, and ordinance changing the membership qualification required. For appointment to the Burnersville Fire Company, number one, first aid squad, and amending chapter two. Of the Borough Code entitled Administration. Anyone want to be heard on this, this is just a language change so that we, hopefully we'll get more people.
Thank you for the theory, um, we, that's where our motto is that. Uh, we have allow any legal residents to be in our company, in the past we've had, uh, you know, legal residents to be our company members and they have been. Nothing but very helpful and we're just looking to see if we can uh not exclude anyone who is a legal resident in our town or the country from the.
No, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Anyone want to be heard on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty twenty nine on final reading and adopt as public.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Painter?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Lazarino?
Yes.
I move that ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty thirty, authorizing twenty twenty six salaries and wage. Ranges for non-construction employees of the borough of Bernersville, introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law. The public hearing is scheduled for immediately beginning at seven P M Monday, November twenty fourth, seven twenty five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Uh, Jim, ready, Chip, Junior?
Um, I move that ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty thirty one, covering some about five dollars for placement of SBR dwellers for sewer plant. And general packet items, introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law and that is a metaphorical carry. Sorry, it's scheduled for immediately beginning seven P M Monday, November twenty fourth, twenty thirty five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, uh, we're back to Rich.
I move that ordinance number twenty twenty five dash twenty thirty two, adding one new sergeant position in the police department and amending chapter two. For the Borough Code entitled Administration, introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, the public hearing is scheduled for a meeting. Beginning seven P M Monday, November twenty fourth, twenty thirty five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to resolutions, are there any that we want to? Consider separately or you have questions on?
I'm just gonna make it come on the head where we address that.
Most of it is pretty standard. The ABC license is Monterey gourmet. Um, the two oh nine was all those little requests for the mini golf and. Um, the tree lighting and those events. Yeah, you know, I haven't heard back from her since I said that it had to be local insurance. Yeah, I need to do that, yep.
He just the rehash of the um, but two ten.
Yeah.
The turf field, just for anybody rather than working meetings.
This, this is uh, basically what we're doing is restricting the use of the turf field to support the benefits. So that we don't have parties or, you know, tables or chairs. Um, and the reason we're doing it is because of the, you know, tremendous cost of the turf field and it's being. It's deteriorating, it's going down, it's a inferior. And, 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 you know, we have maintenance done like four times a year. But that's different than repairing, so now we spend more on nature repair and so it's just this, this is a cycle, you know. Repair it, repair it, so we're trying to implement it to just.
Sports, so that anytime, you know, if they want to have an event or party, you do it on the um. Let's see, the, the baseball. Lower bowl, yeah.
Yeah, and so that, this is just around you for not to access that, we're still looking at.
Which one?
We have cameras, we have a camera system, there's people coming from out of town, wherever, like I was saying before. Get those cameras on it, put it under the police or wherever it has to go, anyone that's interested. And look at what's going on there, I built that system, it's there as a bell.
That's how we know that it's being abused, so it is.
But, but that field, I'm gonna tell you something, we got ripped off by this. An old drain down underneath it and that's why it's ripping apart.
It's.
And it's all draining down into the polar rings.
I will say it's been really used, utilized and it's great to go there on a Friday night and see all the sports teams playing. A hundred to hundred people, life's looks great.
Life's a mess.
So, but we, we need to make sure that it's there for years.
Many years.
Yeah, I think the uh, Berners is playing bridge, but the little football, I don't know what he, but in preschool, it's a play. Place tomorrow, which is really nice to see those accounts and stuff.
Yeah. Do I have a motion for resolutions twenty five, one ninety-three through forty-five, two ten? I'm. Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lazarino? Or yes? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Creed?
Yes.
No, it's my turn. Mayor's update, um, October second, I don't know, for those of you that don't know, um, Ronnie Carroll Dobby. Been living up in time, every year do a unbelievable feast for our first responders. Which is so generous of them and this was their tenth year. And he did an even bigger one and had fireworks and it was, it was phenomenal for all the first responders and their families, so thank you to them. Uh, we had the Apple Festival, the farmer's market, so I always get to do the drawing for the, somebody to win it. Uh, I attended a downtown roundtable that the Somerset County Economic Development. Uh, Department did along with downtown New Jersey. Uh, was several mayors and elected officials kind of talking about problems with downtown New Jersey transit and those kind of issues. The county does have city data. That we can have for nothing, we can use, we can ask them for information, it's kind of the same as place or A I. So you can get all that demographic of when people come into your town, how long they stay. Where they're coming from, where they go and they leave the town, so um, yeah, that is, uh, was it Jessica Payolino? Who's the head of economic development, you can ask for that data, which I thought was a, a good thing that we could have. Um, that was on the tenth, I also did another wedding, I think I'm up to twenty-five, unless you're now. Uh, the haunted history tour was on the eleventh, I think Rich, you attended that as well. That was, it was raining, but I think still went over very well, people really enjoyed it. I attended the Main Street Board Meeting, they are having a business mixer on. Uh, November twelfth at the Bernie, so if you know any businesses, remind them to go. Uh, I attended a conference of mayor's board meeting. On the eighteenth, we had our first music on the benches, which was Alejo and Sarah. Was at uh, right by the Milson Fenwick statue, it, it was, there were maybe twelve people that stopped to listen. It was lovely, it was like a half an hour of uh Argentine. I don't even have a strike, but he just does this amazing. And then this past Saturday, they were down here, I think at Borough Hall, doing bossa nova type thing. And I think they're trying to do every Saturday through November at four o'clock, so if you watch for it, it's really, he's amazing.
Has the location changed?
Yeah, they're doing different benches.
Just put somewhere.
Yeah, in town. Um, then I had another wedding. I attended the downtown New Jersey Conference in Flemington, um, the theme was street level magic, building experiential downtowns. And we got to tour the renovating pro- project that's going on to renovate the old Union Hotel in Flemington. That is phenomenal, I mean, they are restoring the old hotel, adding rooms in the back. Apartment buildings, a huge public plaza, three restaurants, a mini bowling alley, I mean, it's. It's gonna bring so much new life to Flemington, it's amazing, uh, was great to, to get to tour that. Um, had a League of Municipalities Legislative Committee meeting, uh, we had the trunk or treat on Saturday.
Wouldn't wake up. Shipped, sipped it a little bit more for two-year-old. He tried to get him going, he was uh, he was gonna be a lion, it was already, but. You know, I actually saw Rich later and I was like, I couldn't make it over, you're gonna move it.
Thank you to Recreation and the D P W and the Police Department and the Fire Company who were all there, they had the um. The command vehicle from the Fire Company so the kids could see all the equipment in there and now, you know, how he can make falls. And then uh. They had petting zoo, they had a hay maze, they really did a lot more this year than we've had in the past, which meant the kids didn't get so focused on just candy. They had other things to do, SAP had his little baby there, uh, it was, it was really.
Tried to explain this all to him, just for him to see.
But yeah, it was great, well, thank you to everyone for that and um. We do have the, I don't know if you looked at the flash vote results from our quality of life, I thought it was. Pretty positive and that eighty-three percent of people said it either good or excellent. Uh, quality of life here, um, what was, library came out first of our strengths. I think it was library, physical safety and security and the school system, those were the top three that people thought. Um, were our strengths, um, what's important to people, which I thought was interesting, the top. Um, most important to you was physical safety, uh, the school system and then shopping and restaurants. Really surprised me, um, what they thought was, should be the uh important priorities for Bernersville. Is local business development and growth was number one, preserving open space and improving traffic flow. So those were the clear victims, but if you have a chance, it is on the website, you can look at the, the details. And read through the comments, if you have time. Um, we also are, I, I think, um, you want to talk about the Highlands?
Um, not yet, I mean, you can mention that we have the.
We have the draft.
But I figured out, we have a meeting with the council.
Right.
The Highlands Council.
Yeah, so we, yeah, Jessica kind of finished the draft designating what we, we have to designate what we consider um, the downtown.
The center.
The center. And that then kind of gets held aside that this is where you will do any new building. And then the rest is all protected more or less or within limits, um. So we have to meet with them either, I don't know, the state or Al, would you like to?
Your chancellor?
Meet with the Highlands, someone will do that.
Yeah.
Either whoever's available.
Yeah.
I will let him get a meeting set and uh, it should only, I think it's just gonna be one meeting, maybe. All right, that's it for me. Nancy?
Okay. I'm following up about the health department, they also have a regions coming, coming up.
Right on.
Which is, I forgot order, it's in Baccarat, I'm sorry.
Um, probably the community center.
I think, that's where it really is.
Yeah.
Uh, it's on November eighth, September twelve and then another one January, and September twelve. No one wants to park, dogs have to be controlled for dog, I guess.
Is there a bee?
No, it's free.
Wow.
No question answer. Um, yes, thank you to everyone for the, from the street, Tom, I talked about how to expand it. Um, I suggested maybe next year we do a little dog custom breed before, before the kids come out. Let me try to do it, so that's how a lot of the dogs there, so.
Yeah.
Fire dogs.
Very, very dalmatian.
I just wanted to uh, remind everyone about uh, the new Virgen River Water closing, not air herb. We had initially been told that it was gonna be at night, they changed it for two during the day. So we didn't find out why that happened, but uh, we just found that out last, um, mid last week. So our police department has been putting notifications out and Virgen River Water has been putting notifications out to be done on Thursday, so.
And it's ten to four?
Yeah, nine to nine to four.
Yeah, it didn't seem that crazy, like I thought it was gonna be worse, but I think.
I did talk to the chief about it last week when we found out and he said because it's after. The morning school rush and the rush hour that it probably wouldn't be so bad. And then the afternoon, you know, they do let the buses through, they did, you know, to fuck with the school about it. Um, we heard from a couple complaints today, well, complaint about more detour signs. So New Jersey American Water is gonna actually have an additional police officers tomorrow. Um, so I guess the kind of. Uh, I think, I think it would have taken longer at night.
Yeah.
For some reason and um, something about the um. Asphalt plant not being open or make it more, I guess, expensive and you're not.
I heard that they, that they probably bringing some special equipment because there was like massive amount. I heard that they, that they brought in, bringing some special equipment because there was like massive amount of concrete under, that they were not expecting.
Oh.
But they got some machine that just like rip right through, so.
Yes.
Hopefully not gonna delay it anymore.
Oh.
Um, no.
It's, yeah, right?
And, uh, they see their, their flashing beacon, um, I mean, with the place today, um, yeah, that, they're expensive, so. Um, but it's installed today, the last one was failing.
Is, did we replace it or the county?
We did, we did, we did.
Um. It's a report, yeah.
So, um, yeah, they had, they did, they got complaints about it, because it wasn't. Um, and it's all the lights, they'll be happy to, there's all the lights at the library, that'd be Nelson Fenwick statue. And all that's spare, um, sticks and working, um, we're still waiting for the replacement light that the county had provided from shop on two oh two.
Sure.
Uh, still waiting for that replacement. Uh, but they're, they're saying that, that we get it, it'll be there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I need a motion to accept the department monthly reports.
So, of course.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, correspondence, we just had that letter from the league, just, we got their proposing at two percent, I don't know, what did you produce, do you know?
We're good, that does get started, I think.
They're like fifty seven hundred.
Yeah.
So surprising.
Isn't it based on population too, like everybody pays a different?
Yeah.
Are we mandated to join? Cause it's interesting, school boards have to join New Jersey School Boards Association.
No, we're not, but, I mean, they do lobby on municipality we have. You know, I think they're the most powerful lobby that we have.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we need them, nobody else is fighting boards.
I think it's not well said.
Yeah. Um, any, oh, unfrisked, we have.
We're fondness, we typically handle like letters from residents in this section, like the letter we got, I think Heather I sent the letter to the council, like, do you wanna talk about that now, or put that on for some point?
Um.
And that's just her, but like, sort of any letter that we get.
I think that will I answer her, if you share that, I believe.
I think number two, in New Jersey Transit, I saw you farm that one. About. Her statement.
Answering her, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
One of the things, well, it was Heather I was, was questioning, um, well, it was very complimentary, but then her question was about, uh, you know, ice cream into Burnsville, and how are we prepared for that? And what would we do, and I think I had just answered what the police had said is that, um, we, we're not going to assist, the police are instructed, I think from the prosecutors' office, not to assist. But also they cannot interfere. Um, I did go to most of the, um, Latinos stores and cafes and dropped off copies of immigrant, the immigration rights that should you encounter and ice, so that they could hand it out to their customers. Um, but other than that, and she's also asking, it's what I was gonna ask the superintendent, what the schools were doing. Um, and I don't think they have any input either. The schools did not. Sure.
There's like a, an arrest warrant, I think, and this is just a nice Googled, the, you know, what the eternal attorney general says in New Jersey. And I think that local police force can get involved if, uh, if there's like a warrant or an arrest or something like that, or criminal, criminal activity, so they can assist the back of the thing, but not like a generic, like, like coming in or something.
Yeah.
That's I think.
And I think I will say, I think, you know, what we're seeing now is mostly large cities, I think we're way at the bottom of this. But it's still, it, it is a, uh, a real fear for a lot of the residents, so. Um. And, and we had another letter from someone offering to help with New Jersey Transit again, so like, hey, the more the merrier. I don't care, if you wanna call them, call them. Um, stop signs at five corners at Clermont, this was. We had an issue with this.
I'm personally opposed to the idea that I, you know, Sarah wrote away the end of the day, I can understand.
Yeah, I was just in my player today, and almost every intersection I went through was an always stop, and it and one of my kids went to San Francisco, it's like every intersection is an always stop, and that, you know, people tend to get used to it. It's just the transition time is gonna be a little.
I did check with them, if they had said they needed to pass a resolution to say exactly what they wanted us to say. Uh, it turns out it should be ordinance, because it was needed in order for the police to enforce the stop. So, um, without us passing the ordinance, they can get the ticket.
So we would have to change the, like, put it into the police ordinance?
Yeah, in the traffic ordinance.
Right.
Tracking night, tracking, or. The police can't get tickets.
Without.
If they don't, they don't have to back it up. For violating the stop sign?
It's not recognized as a stop.
Yes, you can't, you can't enforce any tracker regulation unless it's in the ordinance. We, we had a problem a few years ago, but lots of other charities had fines that weren't operated by the league, and we.
They get challenged, yeah, if you give a ticket.
They will be out now.
Even Snail Road, that, that was stops, this.
This is out of those of you in the, uh, the five corners of Clermont and the, and right now, which now truly has three stop signs, it will now have five. That's what the county is proposing to.
Oh, because it's a county rule?
Yeah.
Okay, because the county put it in, we would have to recognize it across Burnsville. It's a normal course, right?
And it's, you know, right now, there, these stop signs are on our rules.
Yeah.
Not on theirs.
Right.
So if you're scared, we think that we've introduced ordinance at the next meeting and adopt it in December.
Hmm, we'll see how it works.
Any comments on?
No, not yet, there's an open session coming up very soon, their RPM fees, what is that for?
Um.
Oh, they're for their application.
So they were looking, we've discussed here previously that they are they changed the siding and roofing and a few other aspects of the three scatter sites toward the housing, about them. And they made a presentation to you, and they talked about how if, if you hit that, it's gonna reduce our cost that we had contributed to them. I think that part was seventy thousand dollars, uh, the other component was blasting.
Right.
And so because it was a planning board application and that those material were originally grew by the planning board, they had to go back to the planning board. So, uh, they were just asking if the application fee could be waived, which is thirty seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Were reimbursed them?
Uh, so they did say reimburse, they sent the check for thirty seven hundred and fifty dollars. But ironically, their escrow was estimated to be thirty seven hundred and fifty dollars. So I told them that would not be able to say, if you said it was okay, they did not reimburse them, it would just eke that towards escrow, because they only submitted one tax for thirty seven fifty. They would have had to escrow of our planning, the planning board. So we wouldn't give it back, we just wouldn't get thirty seven hundred and fifty more.
Makes sense.
It takes one half of the money only.
Yeah. We okay with that? Compared to the rest of the costs?
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing. Right, mate? Yeah, so we're.
That's true.
Now, may need a motion?
Yes, please.
What would, what about you?
Wow.
I'll, I'll move to the RPM application fees to the planning board.
Yeah, but not the expenses.
Not yet. Right. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any new business? Anything new? No.
Well, sound good, so.
Alright, open session.
Okay, they, we, um, how much is the rock, how much is the rock cost us? Over that, how we get that job?
How much did what?
The rock, the blasting.
Cost us?
Yeah.
We don't have the bill yet.
No?
They, they need to give you an idea.
Uh, it depends on what they.
They, they took like eight hundred thousand dollars of all.
Yeah, we, we agreed to pay the team rain and six something, he changed.
For blasting?
No.
No.
It's capped, that's how much they're, we're paying for their shortfall.
The blasting reduced that overall.
The blasting reduced, we don't know what, they, they cross them to blasting.
And we're hopeful that the blasting would cost less than they initially thought, which they haven't fortunately blasted that much, because we feel it every time we do. Um, so we're hoping that that comes in a little less, and then we don't get it, that comes off, but we would have.
Right, so we actually wouldn't know how much it is, because it's part of their bill, their bill.
We're starting to be in it.
Okay.
Oh, you gave them the two hundred million, two million something, you, you should know.
Yeah.
So that was for what?
The initial plan had one point nine million dollars, part of the, you know, the amount. And they were, but because of time passed, it also increased the number of units, it was increased over time to, to some point six million.
So they increased it to what, like, then?
One nine?
One nine to two six. But it was, of course, the center of New York, so.
But it was gonna be five, so then when you take away the third door of the blast, rather than dig, and you take away the changes in the, um, instead of, you know, the outside siding, roofing, things like that, they brought it down from about five to two point six.
And they got some other things added in.
That's we pay them to do those three sites.
Alright. I, I want to ask to, you made a statement that the lights at the back are bending. You know, the lights?
Um, I didn't.
They had a light in, in the, in the garage, it was not going over, that's eight years ago, when it's, it's two lights on either side of her.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the other thing is, I ask for an earth clock. And I want the earth clock, I don't want, or I'm gonna call people on the board.
What's the earth clock?
It's automatic, it goes into the two stainless steel cabinets. It automatically, by the seasons, as the sun comes up, the lights go off, as they go down, they go on automatically. We don't have to worry about coming into town, you know, many.
Are you talking about the lights, like the light?
All, all the post lights.
Yeah, they're doing, what else do you?
No, but it, 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 it doesn't work, you know, power goes off, then a timer goes off. With the earth clock, it automatically adjusts and runs, you know, it's two earth clocks. Okay, when I, if, if they don't work, and they're off, I have everyone's number, I'm gonna call. Okay, but I hate coming into town with the town not being lit before it gets dark, it should be lit before it gets dark. And then as morning comes up, they can shut off, but to call the police, call the dispatcher, call Town Hall, it's crazy.
It is true, they were wearing those this year.
Oh.
Every day.
Yeah.
We have some, but they were, it got dusk, and they were up at dawn, I was so, they all don't do that, I was watching them.
Listen, I, I spent my time to design it, to do it, you know, to try and save what we were designing there, and look at it, they didn't listen to me, that's why we have sinking, that's why we have the curving rotting, that's why we have, we have buildings leaking.
Hmm, do I have a, oh, anybody else? We're good? Do I have a motion for executive? Second. Will you take it?
I, I do. Bro, you are going to be an executive.